Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cleveland Heights Special Section, Cleveland Heights University Heights School District's Special Session for Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Gainer, would you please call the roll?
This right. Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. Heinz?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Malia, you're muted. Malia says she can't hear anything. Do we have a staff member that, wait, okay, I guess we're okay.
Okay.
Malia is attending virtually. She's not in the city. And we have a one-hour timeframe this evening because of a prior commitment with our superintendent. I'd like to begin by saying that Ms. Kirby and I decided to call this meeting because we've had, in my eyes, a significant number of security issues over the last couple of days. And we felt like we needed to talk about it as a board and make sure the community was hearing those discussions. So that's, that's the purpose of the meeting, but we do have a couple items, personnel items regarding our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
I second.
These were given to us in advance. Is there any discussion? Because Molly is attending virtually, she's unable to vote. Mr. Gainer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes. Ms. Kirby, would you go into your presentation, please?
Yes. Good evening, Board members, and good evening, those that are joining us virtually as well. Tonight, we are going to share an update with the Board and the community on safety and security in the district. As Jim Posh mentioned, we have had some recent incidents. And we want to make sure that everyone is aware of what has happened and also what our next steps are in particular. So we're going to talk about three topics this evening. We'll talk about the recent social media threats that led to school closures. Those occurred at Cleveland Heights High School and Monticello Middle School. We'll talk about the student walkout that occurred at the high school. And we'll also have some discussion about COVID- nineteen and the increasing cases. And so I'm going to be leading the presentation this evening, but my Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Felicia Gould, and my Assistant Superintendent of HR and Operations, Dr. Paul Lombardo, will be on hand to answer questions as well. So one thing I really wanted to discuss before we get into the bones of the presentation is our decision-making process when we're dealing, you know, with difficult situations. And again, we're going to be talking about safety and security and also health. One thing that both of these themes have in common is that as it relates to issues where a decision needs to be made immediately, and we really need to go in a direction immediately, we always confer with the professionals. So as it relates to safety and security, that is the Cleveland Heights Police Department. And as it relates to health and COVID, it's the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, Ohio Department of Health, in terms of their guidance. That is a framework in both instances that's really important because as we get into the discussion today of the issues that we've been facing, they are complex issues. There are people that have opinions on both sides of particular issues. And so we really rely on those who have expertise in those areas to guide, guide our decision-making. But we also have many collaborative structures and committees that we use and that we consider as we're making decisions. So we have a Safe School Advisory Committee that we actually convened in August in anticipation that this would likely be a challenging year. And we wanted to make sure that we were really thinking and being proactive and using the research to guide our decisions on safety and security, policies, procedures, and supports across the district. So that, the organization that we have partnered with is the Educator Safety Network. We have had trainings in the summer, and we are having monthly meetings with a district committee composed of stakeholders across roles. We also continue to have our reopening advisory committee. Now, we have not convened that committee since, I believe, the start of the year, but I anticipate that we will be going back to meeting as, you know, COVID- nineteen continues to change and adjust to see where we are in terms of decisions that need to be made. We also use feedback from district surveys, feedback from parent meetings, feedback from phone calls, emails that parents are sending. We have administrative team meetings that are happening across our district. Each of our buildings has a TAP team, which is a teacher advisory partnership team that looks specifically at issues of school climate. We have multiple school teams across our district who meet and collaborate, problem solve. We have a student cadre that is composed of students in our high school, and they've been working on issues around support and also COVID safety this year. We also have different adults meeting with student leaders as issues arise, and then certainly the Board of Education as well. So just wanted to show, just make sure people were aware of, you know, decisions are complex. And so we want, we do want to make sure that we're hearing from a lot of different people, considering a lot of different things, getting feedback and ideas. Those issues of immediate concern, for sure, we rely heavily on the Police Department and the Board of Health. And so this is just a slide that, that I find helpful. Whenever we engage in a problem, actually big or small, we want to be careful about rushing to a solution without being very clear on the problem that we're trying to solve for, really identifying the root cause of that problem, identifying solutions to address that problem, and then assessing the impact and the outcome of our solutions. This applies to academic decisions, this applies to operational decisions, this applies to issues of safety, both health safety and student physical and social emotional safety too as well for the staff. It's a part of our Ohio Improvement Process that our district leadership team engages in. And it's also, it's the same structure that our building leadership teams use as they build out their building plans. So next, I want to talk about where we are in terms of school threats and to talk a little about the local and national landscape. Unfortunately, right now, this has definitely been a challenging time for school districts. And we know that post, post, after the shooting, the unfortunate and horrible shooting that occurred in Michigan, we have seen across the country, we have seen across the state, and we have seen across even the county, increases in social media threats and threats of violence. So I've talked to multiple colleagues who are wrestling with the exact same issues, unfortunately, that we are wrestling with. Outside of that, just this return to in-person learning. We know that the academic challenge has been hard for students. They've missed that development. They've also missed that, the ability to develop key interpersonal skills, social emotional skills, but also to be known. So what we saw is that when we look at across our schools, we really miss that ability for staff to connect with students, and those personal connections are really key. Schools are doing some things to address that, but we see that as, as a challenge for sure. Wanted to share a couple pieces from the Safe School Advisory Committee. You know, we, we had our meeting yesterday. And our, the experts in this field, we work with Doctors Amy Klinger and Doctors Amanda Klinger. I shared lots of valuable information about what these threats look like across the country. But one thing they also shared is this uptake in school threats isn't just a post-COVID issue and actually was, has been happening since two thousand and thirteen. It feels like it's more now because schools really have been out for a year and a half, but it's a trend that they have been seeing in their work across districts in particular. And so next, I want to talk about this specific threats that have occurred just to make sure that everyone has the same information. And, and one thing that, you know, it hasn't necessarily surprised me. We know when incidents happen that people rarely have all of the information. And so as they're discussing it, you know, in person, discussing it over social media, it's hard to really get to one core source of truth. So what I hope I'm able to do here is to share the exact information about these threats so that people are aware of what happened. So the first social media threat that led to a school closure happened on Monday, December sixth, at Heights High School. We became aware of this threat around one o'clock PM. And after that, the school went into a level-two lockdown. We immediately contacted the police, shared the threat, and they started the investigation process. Once we determined that it wasn't going to be kind of a quick, a quick investigation, we started the process of having parents pick up their children at about two-thirty PM. So one thing that's important to note, when it comes to the threats, the first piece that we work with the police on is to determine whether or not it's credible. So there's, you know, there are lots of different kinds of threats. There were general threats, there can be specific threats, there can be specific threats to a high school or specific threats to a particular person, et cetera. And so that conversation with the, with the Police Department is very important because from that we determine, do we need to go into one of our level lockdown procedures? The police began to investigate that threat. The students, again, were released in a staggered process at two-thirty on that day. And we had a remote learning the next day, December seventh. And we also had a remote learning day for most students on December eighth. The student who, and who was identified as the source of the threat was a student who had been learning virtually within our district. That student has since been charged with two felonies, making terroristic, terroristic threats and inducing panic. We did return to in-person learning on Thursday, December ninth. The reason on December eighth that we did have some students come in, and I do want to be clear here because I know there were some questions, we actually have been in communication with the Police Department. And so they actually had already identified the likely student. And they felt comfortable with a small group of students coming back into the building. There's a process where you don't necessarily want to tip your hand as you're trying to interview the student and determine, you know, if there are going to be some next steps and charges. So we were comfortable having students and staff in the building. We did have some students who tested, in addition to our MDAU students. So the next social media threat at the high school occurred this past Monday, December thirteenth. I was in the building at the time because I had scheduled listening sessions with the students. I was actually in the midst of a listening session when I heard about the threat. This was at the beginning of third period. And received a threat, again, indicating that there was going to be a shooting at the school during an identified period, I think it's a fifth period. That was, that, again, that threat, we immediately contacted the police. They immediately started the investigation. We immediately went into a lockdown, similar to the incident the previous week. Once we determined that it was going to take some time for the police to get to the bottom of that threat, we began to engage in a process where parents could come and pick their students up for an early dismissal. We did not want students sitting in one classroom for four to five hours if we knew that it was going to take some time. Now, one thing I want to share with the Board and the community was that the students, the staff, did an incredible job with that dismissal. Everyone was cooperative, everyone was helpful. Central office staff came and pitched in. Teachers who didn't have students in their classrooms pitched in and were helping us go to classrooms, identify students, and escort them down. Parents are very patient. We coordinated well with the Cleveland Heights Police. So I was, and, and the students were pleasant. They understood the seriousness of it, very cooperative. Those who weren't able to leave early, you know, remained safely until the end of the day. But most of the students were, eventually the parents did pick them up. And then we had bag lunches available as well, since all the students missed lunch. We had a remote learning day the next day. And because that investigation is still ongoing, we elected to keep the high school in remote learning for the remainder of the week. And again, that investigation is still ongoing. There were going to be final exams that were scheduled. Those have been pushed back until the week that we returned from the break. And the third threat I'd like to speak to was a threat that happened that we found out about early this morning. This was a threat against a Monticello or Monte Middle School. And a student indicated that they were going to come to the school and create and commit a shooting there against people in the building as well. So the same thing, we contacted and conferred with the police. Because it was such a specific threat, we did declare a remote learning day. There were some students who had already arrived to the building, about ten students. But Dr. Jackson was able to talk to them and their parents and make sure that those students got safely home. Most of them were with parents, I believe. The Police Department did start to investigate this threat. They have determined that this is an out-of-state threat. It was against a Monticello Middle School that is in the state of New York. And the actual threat came from a student that is not in New York. So I think all of those are instructive of how frustrating what's happening right now is in schools. You not, if you have these threats that are happening, perhaps it could be someone within the school community, perhaps it's someone who is, you know, thousands of miles away, but it's causing, you know, panic and fear and making schools, you know, change their learning, their learning plans. So before I go into the district response, are there any questions about the social media threats? I think we're all pretty aware of that. So let me, I want to now kind of walk through our district response to these threats. So some of these responses are just kind of like standard things to do from a communication perspective. So we have kept our sta, our staff members and students aware of the threats. So from the threats to the lockdown to the police response. As it relates to the high school, the administration is continuing to meet with students and to collaborate with teachers aligned, aligned to this problem-solving process. So we know when we have a situation where students are sharing these threats, right? So it's not only the, the student that made the threat, there are, you know, lots of kids who are sharing the threats around. We want to make sure that we're connecting with students to talk to them about, you know, quickly making sure information also gets to adults and really staying true to our see something, say something mantra, which the students did do a good job on. But we want to hear from them in terms of what they think is behind these threats and what's going on as well because this is a role that is going to be key for them. We also know, based on the infractions that we've seen in our high schools, really, actually, in our secondary schools, we've had increased disciplinary infractions that our students desperately need social, emotional learning and, and again, that ability to connect. All of our schools have a robust positive behavior intervention support plan, so that's PBIS. In our high school, you know, about a month ago, they started going through a trusted adult process where they have identified all the students and have asked them to identify a trusted adult who they can go to in the building should they have a need or a concern. We have some mentoring programs that have started and will be expanding. As it relates to our use of Ester funds, we have hired an additional social worker, additional success coaches, additional teachers. And the school did have, if you guys recall, on November seventeenth at the high school, they did a day of goal-setting and planning with the ninth and tenth graders. That was a group of students who, the transition has been the most difficult. That is also the group of students that don't have the same kind of bonds and relationships with adults because, you know, they've been in virtual learning for so long. So we had that day, during that day, they talked about goal-setting, they talked about academics, they talked about conflict resolution. They did some exploration of CTE and college interest, CCP, those things, those things as well. We want to continue to do, do those types of things. I know the high school team is going to be working with the teachers to kind of talk through other things and other opportunities to bring kids together because we're just missing that time to plan and connect. And so that's the time we have to really get back. And then we also always will continue to advertise and share information about see something, say something, our safety tip line as well, to make sure that everyone knows. If you don't feel comfortable going to your trusted adult, this is how you can get in touch with the district so that we know that there is a, a concern. Additional, additional response. Our Safe School Advisory Committee continues to meet. I mean, and again, I, we kind of anticipated that we would need this body. And so this body is really helping us kind of think through these issues under the facilitation of experts in this field who really are called on nationally by school districts to make key decisions on safety. I mentioned a little bit about the Ester funds previously. But we'll continue to implement those Ester-funded supports. And this is what, you know, those funds are for. The funds are to support both the academic and social emotional needs of students. There are also some pieces that we want to really make sure are tight as it relates to the climates at our schools. We know that if we have help, students who are going to class on time in an orderly fashion, that will help them to be positioned to be successful in their classes. That will help them to build a connection to success in the schools as well. You know, the hallway transitions in the high schools and the middle schools, I can tell you, is always something really difficult. You have, in the middle schools, about six hundred students, you know, dismissing at one time, changing classes at the high school. That number is fifteen hundred students changing as well. I've seen the, the transitions multiple times. At big high schools, it's always, it's always an issue. But we do know that the more structures we have, the easier it is for kids to navigate, to get to their classes on time. So these are some things that the high school team will be looking at. We also want to look at things like book bags, policies around book bags in particular. One thing that our safety consultants have advised is to take a look at that, especially as it relates to the situation that happened in Oxford where the student had the weapon inside of his book bag. This is a unique time right now because post-COVID, there's been hesitance to have students gathered in a space. And in fact, the, the book, the locker protocols are from last year. We were still trying to keep students spaced, so that's something we'll have to take a look at. In addition to things like tardy policies, ID policies, and continue to build on that positive behavior intervention system at the school. And so those are just, in terms of some things that, those don't necessarily directly address the social media threat itself, but what it does is ensure that our schools are safe environments where, you know, should we have to quickly go to a lockdown, we're able to do that, you know? And, and again, students are building ownership of the school, students are feeling successful and supported. Students have really good relationships, and that, that relationship piece is really, really key. Now, the one piece that is not really based on relationship that I do want to ask the Board to give me their feedback on exploring is metal detectors. Now, I will tell you after this, the, the social media threats, I have had both students and parents reach out to me and say, I think it's now time for metal detectors, we need metal detectors. I'm not necessarily surprised at that, surprised at that question, but I think that is a decision that is, that has to be carefully, carefully made. And we talked about that in the Safe School Advisory Committee. There, there's people on both sides of the issue. The research doesn't really show that metal detectors necessarily make schools safer, though some people, some people may think that they feel safer. When you look at some of the research there, there are some you say, well, maybe it's something that you, you do from time to time, for example, but not necessarily every day. So there's a lot of things to, to look at. I really can't start to, if we do make that decision to institute, we have to have administrative guidelines that lay out what that process is. We currently do not have that. So, so right now, we're exploring that with Niola. They've sent us some language to put into the administrative guidelines. We're starting to take a look at that, but I would like the Board to kind of weigh in on that when I kind of conclude this piece here. And as I said, from, from an exploration process, this is a, this type of change is not an overnight change that you make in a district. We must get feedback from students, we must get feedback from parents, we must get feedback from staff. We certainly will confer with the police. We certainly will confer with, you know, folks who are experts in this area. And in fact, one of the things advised by Dr. Klinger from Safe Schools is that if you do do metal detectors, it cannot be the only thing that you do. Like, it has to be a layered approach of other supports as well. It's okay, so we're on the exploring the use of metal detectors. Yep. So from a perspective of implementation, then, we have them, we're using them right now at, at our athletic, our athletic competitions that have, like, very, very large crowds. So for us, that's boys' basketball and football, those are our large crowd activities. And then, as I indicated, it is, it's mixed. I think one thing that, one reason why this discussion has come up is the question is, well, if we have metal detectors and we get these threats, does this mean that perhaps we won't have to go into lockdowns? And the question is, perhaps. The thing about these lockdown situations is that they're different. And so you can never say anything with certainty for any of the lockdown situations because those situations are different. And so again, we're, we are exploring it as a tool, but again, we have to make sure that we follow guidelines with that. So in terms of the exploration of, of metal detectors, again, I'll be asking you to weigh in on adopting administrative guidelines. And one thing I want to make clear, just because we adopt guidelines doesn't mean that we will be installing metal detectors. It will say, we have the guidelines in place, should we want to make that, that decision. And again, that's a decision that we, we have to make in concert with the collaborative group of stakeholders. So let me pause here because I, you know, we have two other big topics to talk about, just to hear questions if we, and if you'd like, you know, if you wanted to do the vote, we can do it at the end, but at least I want to get that discussion.
Well, I just want to remind everybody.
Well, I just want to remind everybody, you got a part commitment with the legal women voters at?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have another half an hour. We have a meeting next week, so we can easily, easily.
Continue, correct.
I mean, let's just pick apart, I mean, let's, let's focus our energies on this and not rush through it, obviously.
Okay.
What, what kind of feedback do you guys have for Liz thus far?
A lot. I guess maybe starting where you left off first, I am not a fan of metal detectors. I think that they send a bunch of, of really negative messages. I think that we would, that in this case, you know, we would be making a decision to install metal detectors when in fact, there were no real threats, which doesn't mean that there won't be a real threat tomorrow. But I think it's a, it's a really terrible look. I think that our see something, say something plan has worked beautifully this year. Metal detectors require a level of sort of uniformity in a school, you know, where they are installed at every single door that is ever used throughout the course of a day, from first thing in the morning until the last person leaves. And as a result, I don't have a whole lot of faith in our fidelity to them. I worry about that, I question that. I also think that it reinforces a stereotype that is so inaccurate about our schools and our students. It's, it's, so I'll, I'll just stop there. It's something that I'm very hesitant about. And, and to be honest with you, when it comes to administrative guidelines about it, I would be inclined to not even put administrative guidelines in place in order to slow down the process for a, you know, a future discussion of implementation. I would want there to be that required pause. So I'll stop there because I want others to chime in.
I think we, we had the Safety Advisory Meeting on yesterday and, you know, we got a lot of information. And I'm just somewhat, I'm kind of on the fence. If, should we install metal, metal detectors or what is the best route? Or should we have like a wand for students' book bags? But I'm just, I'm thinking the climate that we're in and not only our districts, but schools across the country, they're doing this whole copycat thing. And, and you're absolutely right. I mean, we don't know if, you know, the, the threats will actually be taken out, but I do think that we have to make sure that, you know, our kids and our staff are safe. I know when we talked about it on yesterday, policy will have to be put in place. And even if we did install metal detectors, we would have to have someone to actually operate that, not administrative staff. And that's a major cause. But I, I, I still think we have to just look at the best way to keep our kids safe. And I, I still think it's something that we should further explore and look into and look and see what the cause, not to say that we would actually do it, but let's, you know, investigate, investigate it and see.
Malia, can you speak? Can you release your? There you go. Can't hear you. Can't hear you. Hold on a sec. Hold on one minute. Can you try it? Says you're talking, it's just not coming through our system.
Oh dear.
There you go.
Hold on a sec, you're good.
Oh, okay. So now the question is, am I going to hear myself through the speakers of my computer? Oh, well, no problem. So number one, how cool that I can be hundreds of miles away and still participate. Thank you. We've learned some stuff during COVID. And one of the things I think I have learned during COVID is that what used to be a hard and fast opinion frequently gets changed. And I have been an opponent of metal detectors for similar reasons to Dan because I think it sends this message to our students that they are not trustworthy and I don't like the image it sends out to the rest of the world about what it's like to come into our buildings. However, the world has changed an awful lot and I would be interested in knowing if the students would feel more secure, more safe going through metal detectors into the building in the morning, if that would help them, would, would ease their minds. I, I can imagine that it would ease the minds of a significant portion of parents, but I'm not convinced that metal detectors would actually prevent somebody who wanted to bring a weapon into the building from actually doing so. So it's sort of a perception, reality thing. I just wish we weren't in a position where I'm actually considering the use of metal detectors in our schools, you know? But that I can't change unfortunately. And as Beverly said, absolutely, the safety of our students has to be first and foremost because we, you know, nobody's going to learn anything if they are not safe and they're not going to learn well if they don't feel safe. So I think it's important that we get some feedback from the students about whether that would help alleviate their fears. And then I had one other thought. You mentioned ESSER funds. I know that we're trying to hire lots of specific people. Have we had much luck in filling those positions?
We have, oh, sorry. In terms of the positions that I've detailed in the presentation, we have filled those positions, so social worker, nurse, student success coaches, additional teachers. The positions that are difficult have been things like lunch aids in particular, bus drivers are not easy to identify, to hire too as well. But we have been able to, for those other positions, identify people. It's not, it's still not easy, but we have had some success.
Molly, do you have anything else to add?
It's a shame that it's so hard to find lunch aids and bus drivers because frequently those are people who students can have very close connections to, who are not teachers. There isn't the inherent power dynamic that a student has with a teacher and those can be very close and meaningful relationships. And I certainly want to encourage anybody in the community hearing this to consider applying for those positions because you can really affect some kids' lives in a tremendously positive way, in a job that doesn't seem terribly glorious, but, but really does connect closely with, with students.
Thanks, Jody.
Yeah, I'm a little conflicted about the use of metal detectors for a couple of reasons. I mean, number one, if it will make our staff and our students safer, then I would absolutely want to do it. But what I'm concerned about is, does it provide a false sense of security? Where people then believe that they're safe and, you know, maybe, what I wouldn't want is that we don't take a threat seriously because we have this false sense of security. I'm also concerned about it putting a really unfair expectation on the person or persons who are manning those metal detectors. That's scary to me and, you know, frankly, I, I'm also concerned about the log jam of kids coming in in the morning. People will find a way around them. They just do. We all know that, you know, that, and the, the threat actor will find, will be the person who will find the way around it. However, I do feel like we need to look at all the research, you know? Because, you know, is there research showing that it does make our, you know, staff and students safer or is it this false sense of security? So I don't want to jump to it, but I don't, also don't want to just discount it based on my gut of, oh, I don't like this. I also want to hear from members of the community, you know, parents. I want to hear from staff. I want to hear from students on, you know, their opinions on it, but I also want to look at the research. What do the experts say about it?
Can I add one thing before, and I want, really want to hear your thoughts too, Jim? This brings up an important piece that's been rattling around in my head. We have got a, a high school full of kids who rather abruptly and on scary terms left the building for a month. And a couple of things that I think I would love to see us make available. One, I would like to see us make the, the building available so that those kids who are nervous about coming back could have an opportunity to, to, to walk the building again, to, to, you know, just to get in. I think that that's an important emotional piece. And we also have, you know, we, we always talk about this amazing community that we are so lucky to serve because we have a lot of people who, if, I think that if we called, if we invited people to, adults to be in the halls, familiar adults to be in the halls or to be available, to just sort of be, I don't even want to call them monitors or anything, just to be available, familiar adult faces. I bet that we would have a ton of parents who would love to be ambassadors, adult ambassadors in the building to just give high fives and for kids to have those familiar faces. Hi, Mrs. Serini, it's great to see you, you know, that sort of thing. So I'll leave it there, but it would be a cool thing for us to, to give an opportunity.
I will, I will share that with the planning team.
Thank you.
I think that's a great suggestion.
So my feeling is coming up with a plan and how to use it is free, not necessarily free, but it's going to be a lot easier for us to implement them if we ever have to. And right now, I'm hearing some of you feel like we don't have to do this right away. I, I may have misread the room, but I do think we owe it to our kids to have a plan in place. I, you know, after the events of this week and there's a fair number of exchanges that Molly and I have with Liz, including a, well, probably a good two hours total or three hours total of calls over the last couple of days of just, just us discussing these things. The one advantage of a metal detector at that point would have been that we would have been, at the time, there was a sense that we wouldn't have had to be in the lockdown that we were in. I mean, kids would have been able to move in the building, go to classes as opposed to being stuck in one classroom. And it probably would have been able to let us open up the next day under this particular situation. You know, I'd like to see the data, but my gut is telling me if someone wants to come in and do some real damage, there's ways to get, bypass a metal detector, you know, hide a gun at some point, put it by a door that's armed, but still reach for it undercover. But I think the metal detectors get us to a point where you have these soft threats where it's almost, you know, someone didn't want to, in, in my day when I was in school, you know, if you didn't want to take the exam, you know, you would pull the fire alarm. Not everybody did that, obviously, and, but, you know, that's sort of what, what happens. And I think the social media threats that we get are ones that are, someone doesn't want to take an exam. And actually, we saw that in, in one of the messages. I'm not sure how much I'm allowed to discuss this because these are private issues with private kids, but.
No, you can't. It was that poster shared everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of our kids.
You just don't want to take a test.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to take a test. So, you know, basically say you're going to shoot up the school, which I'm going to do. So, I mean, I think the metal detector would be some of a deterrent of that. I do think we need to make sure that there is, I'm going to, jumping around a little bit here, but these kids that are doing these threats and they're not serious about going through it, they're going to have the book thrown at them. I mean, there's this one, the, the alleged student that has the terrorism charges against them. They're never coming back here. And it's pretty obvious it was them based on all the tracking and the cookies. I mean, people think that you can post anonymously, anonymously, but the minute you've got an Instagram app on your phone or a Facebook app on your phone, it's tracking you 24/7. And it's doing that, I mean, that's just how these apps work. So even if you go in under another account, it still knows you have other accounts. I mean, they will find you and they have. I think, you know, posters or something at the high school to remind the kids everywhere that you just don't do this or you're going to face some serious ramifications.
Yeah, it alters the rest of your life.
These, these are kids and they're not, some of them are just living for the moment. They don't understand that and I think we need to remind them.
It needs to, it needs to be sewn into what we teach. You know, we teach digital citizenship. We, we teach responsible, you know, sharing. We need to, we need to really emphasize the fact that there is no such thing as anonymity on the web. There's just not.
Well, this is, this is what I'm thinking. I mean, one, we need to put a plan in place immediately so we can actually see what it's going to take. I'd like to remind all of you, when we built the high school, it was built to accommodate metal detectors. There's the power there. We have, we had gotten a grant a couple of years ago, so we actually own the metal detectors. It's not about procuring them. I would feel awful if anything happened between now and when we make a decision. I would like to try some kind of trial period and let the kids know that this is a trial period and we want your feedback on this. And, you know, if enough people are pushing back and saying that this is ridiculous, we don't need it, you know, then I, then at that point, I think we could, you know, change the plan. But I got to tell you, three threats in a matter of a week and a half.
We also had a weapon in the school early in the year.
Well, and we're not the only one. Shaker had a threat this morning and they were in lockdown, so.
Can we get a survey out?
Yeah.
Before we move forward.
Yeah.
And I think it surveys its, its parents, students.
Parents, students, yes.
I think it's also a discussion about, you know, are we talking about all of our buildings? You know?
Talk about what?
About all of our buildings. Is it, you know, I mean, because once you head down this road, you're, you're on a, you're on a real road. I mean, school buses?
Well, can, can we just start at the high school?
So we will get, we will start the feedback process. I think that's what I'm hearing. So we can really hear from students and parents and staff on their perspective on this. And I, and I agree, surveys, but also focus groups, you know, discussions too as well.
So Liz, as we do that, is there a, I know that it's difficult for us to have live access to things like survey responses because we need to make sure, sometimes people put information that's really not intended for a wider audience and, and we have to be careful. We have a responsibility in terms of student records and names and that sort of thing. But I do want to make sure that we have the sort of slightly filtered, it's had a once over, but I also want to get those results out to the community because I want the community to see what the community is saying. There's a transparency piece that we need to do better about. And I think this might be an opportunity for us to do, for us to do a little bit better when it comes to that transparency piece.
Molly, do you still have your hand up?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. A couple of things came to mind. When we had Y High and the high school was at Wiley. there was a whole rash of threats flying around people's social media accounts, which was similarly part of a local and a national trend. And I'm trying to remember what time of year it was. I, I remember it being colder than it is now. But I just wonder if it was also, you know, increased stress as exams get close and whether that's a factor or not. So what, what the safety experts say is this is not a new phenomenon. It's been, you know, the, the increase started in 2013 and we're seeing it all over the place. And obviously, it's connected to the kids having their phones permanently attached to their hands and being constantly on social media. We need to have a very clear and clear-eyed educational campaign so that students, all students understand that this stuff is not funny and it does have terrible repercussions for the rest of their lives because two felony counts is impossible to get rid of. You know, you may turn 18 and be a stellar citizen. You may turn 26 and be a stellar citizen, but getting that off your record is incredibly difficult and expensive. And it, it just prevents you from doing all the normal things that one expects, like, you know, getting a job, buying a house, renting a house, getting a job, getting a job. I mean, all those things are, are permanently damaged by having a felony as a kid. And I've forgotten what the other thing I wanted to say is, so I'll back down now.
Liz, we have time for only the walkout or the COVID conversation?
I, I actually think I can cover both of those in the time that we will have, so. So the, and thank you all for your feedback on, on the first topic. Our second topic is about the student walkout that occurred at the high school. This happened on Friday, December 10th at noon. I was able to speak with one of the student organizers who indicated that the walkout was about the way that the district has handled, handled sexual misconduct allegations over time. And these are misconduct allegations among students. So the student indicated that there was just concern, you know, over quite a long period of time of, of how allegations have been handled. I have not been able to talk with other organizers. My hope actually on Monday when we had the threat was that I would be able, there was a group of students that I was scheduled to meet with that afternoon. In addition, we had the listening session scheduled, but we're unable to do that. So I will be reaching out to see if there's another way I can connect with those students. Because that follow-up is really important. As relates to the walkout, the protest was peaceful. We had staff present at the protest and also in addition to students, also alumni, community members, we had parents that participated in the protest as well. One thing that I want to share as relates to the district response, some of that response was prior to the walkout. So there were meetings that teachers, administrators held with students the day before to assist them with their planning, answer any questions. You know, in some instances, there were students who were making signs, you know, you know, teachers were kind of assisting with that too as well. We will continue, although we were unable to do those listening sessions, we will continue to have that so we can really hear from students, what are their concerns, what is it that they feel are, they are not being heard about? And we want to plan those supports aligned to those conversations. We have, you know, just some initial, some initial feedback, but we really want to hear from more students. The social workers also had, had some planned support on that Monday, the Monday after the walkout. We were anticipating that there were students that might need actually to talk to a clinician about some of the issues that were raised. And so they were there to do some sessions with students. They will also stay, continue with that support. The larger issue as it relates to concerns about the history of how sexual misconduct allegations amongst students are handled. I have already met with a team of people from, from Central Office to kind of take a step back to look at where we are right now with our Title IX allegations that process. But also, what are some steps that we need to take to make sure that we are being both preventive, that we have opportunities for students to get information, for students to get supported, for staff to get supported as well? And so we want to make sure that we are identifying the problem. So this kind of goes back to that first line. What is the problem that we know this walkout, the students are expressing? What is behind that and what do we need to do to address that? I will say to the board, you know, my initial response to secret lieutenant was we need to make sure that we have one person who is over this, watching this, monitoring this, ensuring that we have sufficient training for students, staff, parents, families, community, and also, you know, really overseeing all, all of our processes that connect with this. We do want to make sure that our approach, again, we are taking a deliberate approach and we're addressing all the root causes. And so after meeting with the central office team, we have decided that we will continue, we will have a larger team that will have, you know, student, people in different roles to help us identify our true plan to address this. I, I think that that will end up being likely a staff person, but we want to, we want to be deliberate in that process. Want to make sure we're addressing all those pieces. So we have to continue to hear from students, past and present, on their experiences, their observations, their concerns, their questions as well. And so that is the piece as it relates to this, this student walkout. Top line, we will listen to students, listen to staff, listen to alumni, also look at all the data that, that is available there and then develop a plan to address that. We want every student to feel safe in our building. We want to make sure that they understand the support that we have in place. We also want to make sure that we are making this a part of our curriculum as it relates to behaviors and relationships, you know, between students as well. We can't assume. We want to really be proactive in these pieces, just as we are with, you know, with other PBIS supports and strategies that we have. So that is an update on that particular situation. I anticipate I will continue to have updates. So we'll keep the board informed of where we are around those supports for students, staff, and families.
I, I think one of the things that, you know, when I've individually spoken to board members, I think one of the things that we really want to see is we have these policies. How are they currently implemented right now? You know, this is, I mean, we could all read the policies, but in real life, what actually gets happened? So I guess the ta- I guess the big takeaway that, you know, I'd like to see through this is if a situation happens and someone goes to a trusted adult, what do we do? And is there a way to do it better? And do we need to have relationships with, you know, like a rape crisis center, for example? What happens if it's at a level where we need to involve law enforcement? And how does that pan out? I mean, there's a lot of situations that, you know, people bring to our attention, some recent letters that, you know, call out how they make allegations against certain students. Some of them are allegations. We can't talk about that. We're limited. I mean, this is a minor. We can't discuss these situations. And I know when Dr. Dixon was here and there was a, a similar sexual assault, it was an allegation that wasn't necessarily accurate at the time. And that's an issue. I, I'm sorry, Angel, we can't talk to you right now about this. You, after the meeting, we'd be more than happy to talk to you. What, what do you guys want to see as far as outcomes for this?
I'd, I'd, when, when this sort of came forward, the, the big question that kind of kept running through my head is kind of, why are we involved even in determining whether or not there was an assault? It seems to me that when a, when, whenever, well, let me back up. It seems to me that where we need to be really good is the moment of a report. And we need to have sort of just absolute, on the spot, here's what we do when, every time. And I think, as Jim alluded to, there's probably really clear best practice around this. But also, it just seems to me that why wouldn't we just immediately turn it over to the police? They're the ones who are best qualified to determine, you know, what happened and, and how to get to the bottom of it. And I, I think that the sooner we get that sort of thing sort of out of our house, that decision out of our house, perhaps the better for everybody involved. That's just my, my knee-jerk reaction.
I think, I, I think especially if we have something in place or collaboration with rape crisis, we probably need to investigate and see, you know, what they do. And, and I'm sure they have some kind of component where they work with schools. You know, if we could, or, or have some type of rape, rape crisis hotline or support or something that's where we can go other than with the Cleveland Heights Police, but also turn that over to the experts. You know, you know, if there was some sexual assault allegations, let's see if we can collaborate with that organization. Because I mean, I know they do good work and they've been doing, you know, work throughout the years in this county. So I think that's something we need to look at.
I think there's a couple of things. I mean, first of all, we want to make sure that we have the right culture to prevent these as much as possible. That's something I'm concerned about. And then if there is a situation, we want to make sure our students know, I mean, we just want to make sure that we have the best practices in how to handle a case. We want to make sure our students know how to report a case, who they can go to for help, what kind of supports are available to them. And then I also want to make sure that, you know, when we're looking at if there, you know, if, when there's a case, if there's a case and we have a student, are we trying to punish them or are we trying to rehabilitate them? How do we want to handle that? I mean, what is the best thing to do in those cases? And then I also want to make sure that our students, you know, they're here hopefully for four years, but we want to make sure they know how to be safe when they leave here. We can build the, the best climate and, you know, i- if we were lucky, we would build a climate where it would never happen here ever again. However, I don't want people to leave here with a false sense of security and they go to college or they go to work and they aren't prepared to handle situations because they've never had to face that before or they don't know how to stay safe. So that's something that I want to make sure that we're building into our curriculum and the programs that we have for our kids. I want long-term lifelong skills in making right decisions and that goes for boys and girls. That goes for all of our students.
Jody, that is, man, I'm so glad you said that. That, that is fantastic. Thank you, really, because that opened my thoughts. I also want to take a somewhat, somewhat of what may seem a left turn, but it's connected. We have, currently, we have a, a community of, of young women who feel ignored. They, who feel that, that, that they've been mistreated. And I cannot separate that from the same group of our students who feel always victimized by our dress code. And I think that we need to open this conversation up to extend to our dress code because our dress code is, currently reflects ideas that are just no longer in, in our culture. And I really think that it is too, it is over burdensome on our young women and it is, it, it needs to be revisited. And so as we look at the culture of our buildings, I, I think we must revisit the dress code.
Liz, you still are in the midst of, I know your, your conversations with many of these students was interrupted because of the lockdowns. The things that we discussed tonight, can you discuss with those kids? They're the ones that are concerned and they're the ones that, whether it's real or perceived, it doesn't matter at that point. They're concerned. We just need to get a better sense of what's in their head, where the concerns are. And would you share that back with the board?
I will.
And, you know, I know that there's an organization chart issue that you're, that we, that you and I have discussed. And I know that it's in process that you think that's going to facilitate things. I mean, right now, you've got two people that sort of manage this. And, you know, we've had to make cuts after cuts after cuts and, you know, more responsibilities are being fallen on fewer administrators. But if this is something where you can bring somebody in that's dedicated at this, that might be a, that might be a wise move. Molly, we're running short on time, but I know your hand's up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to jump off what you just said, Jim, which is that right now, our Title IX things are handled by different people and it, our curriculum is handled by someone else and it might make sense to have one person oversee all of it, both the curriculum for our students K-12 and our policies and more importantly, our procedures. Because I think that the sticking point is not our policies. It's how do we actually handle things if something comes to our attention? Who handles it? In what way? What are the steps? And how do we make sure that everybody is given appropriate respect and due process? And it might be best if it's one person who takes that charge.
Thank you. Okay, regarding the COVID conversation, Liz, in respect for your time.
I, I can do, let me just start and then we'll continue in the board meeting next week. We have been receiving questions from parents about the increase in COVID numbers. So I've asked Dr. Lombardo just to kind of give a district-wide update on what those numbers are. And, you know, the question that we're getting is, when will you close the school? When will you close the school? And that was a question, every time we see a surge, you know, I, I get those questions periodically from some parents. So we wanted to kind of take, take some time, share where we are and then talk about those next steps. So, Dr. Lombardo?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I know we're short on time, so I'll go as quickly as possible. If you look at the data, you'll see the schools across the top. What I've done is I've broken down the data into weeks. So you'll see there's a couple of weeks before Thanksgiving. You'll see the week of Thanksgiving and then a couple of weeks after Thanksgiving. Noting that the last week, there's only two days being shown. And you'll see the number of positive COVID students right underneath each week. Those are students that are in isolation. And when we talk about isolation, it's, it's those that have COVID and we take the kids or people that have COVID away from those that are not sick. So they're considered in isolation. And then we have the number of positive COVID staff. You'll see that across for each school per week. And then the number of students that are quarantined. People that are quarantined, the definition, it separates people who were exposed to COVID so that they don't get sick. So that's the, the different definitions of positive COVID and quarantine. As you look and you see the different trends, you'll see that, that it is spread out among all the schools. You will see some increases after Thanksgiving in some of the schools. So that's, and the last column shows the total for the district for students, for staff, and then those that are quarantining for that week.
And so, thank you, Dr. Lombardo. And when we meet in December, I'll try to pull this out even more because I know it may be hard to see if people don't actually have the PowerPoint and are making it bigger. As it relates to the decision to close the classroom, so that's the first, to. As relates to the decision to close a classroom, so that's the first, to close a school, when we see large numbers of positives, we report, first of all, all of our positive cases to the Board of Health. They are tracking and monitoring with us if there's any evidence of spread. So when we make the decision to close a classroom or close a school, that is a decision that's made in coordination with the Board of Health because they're, they are looking at the contact tracing to see if they see those relationships, which means there's school spread. We have not seen a school spread situation yet, but we watch it closely. And when we see high numbers, we do reach out to them and say, okay, is there something here that looks like it should be a school closure? The other thing to note is that, and Dr. Lombardo mentioned this a bit, a positive case, you know, there's a difference between a positive case and a quarantine. And I know people get concerned when they get, when they see the large numbers, but the largest numbers that we have are students who are quarantined to, due to close contact. I can tell you, we have pretty conservative guidelines as relates to quarantining. You know, some districts don't follow that at all, but we do follow the Board of Health's guidance on that, which is, which in some instances means we have larger numbers of students quarantining. Vaccination does make a difference. And so to me, the, these numbers also show we have to continue to push vaccination opportunities, information and ensure that with families. Those students who are vaccinated without symptoms do not have to quarantine based on current guidelines. We know that there has been a mask-to-state policy that the state put out for districts. That really was about, and more applicable to districts that don't really have a mask policy as a way to increase safety in those situations. We'll continue to kind of look at that to see if, you know, perhaps that's something we want to implement in order to keep more students in the building, but quite frankly, I'm very hesitant about that, especially given increasing, increasing cases. So the process we'll continue to follow is, you know, aligning with the Board of Health. I expect we will have a meeting likely next week with all superintendents. They always update us as we have, you know, you know, spikes, new variants. They do call superintendents in, share information and share that guidance. And so as I get that information, certainly we'll be communicating all of that back to, you know, the board, to the community, to the Bureau of the Advisory Committee. But I, I do understand the angst. I think we have, we're hitting a, a situation where those people who were vaccinated but then did not get the booster are, are catching COVID, you know, so like, that's kind of one piece. And we also, we're not quite sure where the variant is, you know, in the state of Ohio yet, but that's another thing that's out on the horizon. And then just, you know, continue to encourage people to get vaccinated as well.
The Cleveland Clinic just saw today their first.
There you have it. There you have it, yeah. So I will talk more about this at our meeting on, next week, our regularly, regularly scheduled board meeting.
So you need to get going.
And not listen to people after leaving the building.
Angel, we'll be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Do we need a, a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
A motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Paj?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.